...town council Tuesday, July the 4th, 2017, 9:00 AM in council chambers. We, do we have an introduction of late items? No. So could we please have a motion to, that the agenda be adopted? Thank you. Counselor Rhodes, Counselor King, all in favor? Thank you. We have two delegations this morning, and our first delegation is the Asuas Minor Ball Association with a presentation of the president of this group, Dr. Varsch. Would you like to come up to the microphone, please? Welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your time this morning, counselors. Mayor McCorduff, thank you for entertaining our delegation. I brought with me today some of the future baseball stars of Asuas, and they're here to support our request and the submission that I'm sure that you've all been made aware of pertaining to the letter that we submitted to mayor and council. What I'd like to do is I'd like to kind of start, and I'm going to walk back and forth to my computer here, so please forgive me a little bit, but I'd like to start with talking a little bit about the state of baseball in Asuas.
There are some other chairs just around the corner there if you, we could maybe bring some in.
So, starting with the state of baseball in Asuas, currently our baseball family in Asuas consists of a variety of mixed user groups. Our softball user groups include the adult coed slow pitch group and the seniors mixed slow pitch group. And actually, you know, before I get started. And our seniors mixed slow pitch group. There wasn't any formal minor baseball until 2015, although there was a minor baseball society years back that sort of ceased to operate. I don't know exactly what the year was that they ceased operations, but we resurrected minor baseball in 2016 formally with the foundation of the Asuas Minor Baseball Association. This year, our association consisted of T-ball, which is a seven and under group, a tadpole, nine and under, mosquito, eleven and under, and a Pee-wee group, which is for 12 and 13-year-olds. These photographs here on the screen are our tadpole and T-ball group, and then our mosquito and our Pee-wee's. Our Pee-wee group this year participated in valley-wide competitions on a number of levels. They finished second in a West Colona tournament only to a sort of stacked coquitlam team. They performed very, very well, and in our South Zone Regional Playoffs, they finished with a bronze medal. You can ask the coaches and the players, probably disappointed that they did finish with a bronze, and they were hoping for gold, but sometimes in baseball, that's just how it worked out. So, we're very, very proud of all of our kids' achievements this year, certainly at the higher age groups, and that's a testament to us having organized baseball in Asuas for the last, past three years, and just see the progression of these kids getting better. So, we're very, very proud of what we've been able to put together in the last three years, all the groups of kids that have come together, the volunteers, the parents, the fans, and our umpires. To, at the same time as cultivating a group of baseball players, we're also cultivating a group of umpires to make this all happen. So, what does the future of minor baseball in Asuas look like? Well, a couple of smiling faces on there will tell you that we want to very much grow our grassroots program. We don't see ourselves as a double A or potential triple A baseball program, but what we do see ourselves is as a grassroots program, a program that's going to serve as a kickoff to a lot of bigger and more advanced baseball. We would like to expand into the upper ages with an expansion into the bantam age group for 15, 14, and 15-year-olds as of next year. We're going to start to market heavily to the community of Oliver. That's something that we haven't touched yet with just under 100 registrants in minor baseball this year, only just a handful from Oliver, but we feel that if we heavily market towards the community of Oliver, that that number will jump significantly. And as such, we hope to double our registrations by the year 2020, which would push us up to close to 200 kids. And like I said, our program, we're sort of gearing our program, we understand what we've got in terms of logistical challenges, both from a facilities perspective and from a, just from a scope and size perspective, but we see ourselves as a step off or a jump into program for double A and triple A baseball and beyond. We also see ourselves expanding into a summer program, so a lot of baseball goes from a spring season into a summer season, the summer season being that, that one step higher in terms of its competition over the spring season, and we see ourselves down the road offering and participating in summer leagues. And the big one here for our community, and for the town, and for a lot of the local residents and businesses, is the ability to provide spring tournaments here in Asuas. So, from the community's perspective, tournaments are really now, obviously, for us to be able to pull off and run a tournament that would be, three or four of these tournaments would be typically 18 tournaments in the months of April, May, and June, rough calculations can kind of put that at about 1,000 room nights, which is obviously going to heavily impact the hotels, or restaurants, wineries, retail, certainly it's going to add to the bottom line with respect to hotel tax revenue. There's a variety of things that we've been involved with in this community, and one of the things that we've always sort of prided ourselves on is trying to strengthen our shoulder seasons, and as a result, I think that in Asuas, in the South Okanagan in particular, our shoulder seasons are getting broader and broader, which I think is fantastic. But being able to offer first-rate, or first-quality, or first-class, top caliber baseball tournaments in Asuas is something that I think that could potentially be a huge win for us, potentially being an ideal host site for, for minor baseball tournaments. With the growth of our young family demographic that's occurring in town right now, and first off, I can say that the numbers of calls that we're getting from family, new patients at our office is unprecedented, so I can say firsthand that something that is growing in our community is the young family demographic, and I feel that this is something that we need to support, and being able to offer additional programs to kids that aren't involved in soccer or aren't involved in other sports and activities in town, baseball is a perfect fit. Baseball is one of three programs in our area or in our region that offers organized and competitive sports, only two of which are local. The third one is a soccer outfit out of Penticton that is running minor soccer for our community, but other than minor hockey, minor baseball is the, is the second largest organized competitive local sports association. Finally, and probably most important, is that baseball is getting kids outside. It's getting kids that aren't participating in other sports, that kids normally would be spending some more time on their screens and devices, and getting them outside. I've got some, a couple of anecdotal stories I'll share with you at the end, but part of the passion about baseball is it's one of those games that you don't have to be a super athlete to play, it just means getting outside, throwing the baseball, swinging the bat, and having some fun with your teammates, and it's something that I remember growing up as, one of my very, very fondest memories is organized baseball. So, some of our short-term needs as an association, our immediate short-term needs are going to be, include a pitching mound for our Pee-wee group, which is the 13, 12 and 13-year-olds, along with a baseball infield, storage facilities for field equipment and team equipment. Looking into the future, which is what we do when we're trying to sort of set ourselves on an appropriate course over the next few years, there's a few things here that we see coming down the line, but we're setting ourselves up for now that could potentially service in the future is a baseball field for our bantams. As we progress into the bantam, we've already had, our graduating Pee-wee's have already almost put together their own bantam team for next year because they had such a great time this year, but our graduating players want to continue playing the game of baseball. So somewhere down the line, whether that's the next couple of years or even longer, looking for a field for them to play on, looking for covered and protected dugouts, both from a safety perspective, but up on the west bench in the afternoon on a Saturday, it gets incredibly hot, and just for, just for some shade and keeping the, keeping the kids safe. A permanent field for our, for our eleven and under mosquito-age kids, a batting cage facility, field concession, and then all the way down the line to some of the other requests that we would have with, and things like lights for, for both of the upper age fields. So, going from our long-term needs into, and recognizing our short-term needs, we need to evaluate what our current town assets are. So, how can we accomplish what we need to accomplish, but we do it responsibly and within what we have available to us? One of our current town assets that we have used, and we do use, is the desert park, so that is a, of course, as you're aware, a multi-use facility that caters to grass infields, soccer, soccer users, the horse track, exhibition grounds, all those sorts of things, as a multi-use facility. Our west bench field, although this is a old photograph, the field has been, has been shaled for, for slow pitch baseball and softball. And then the third current town asset is the west bench dog park, which is just adjacent to the west bench softball field. So, some of the solutions that we as a group have put together, we wanted to come to council not with another list of problems, I know you have probably enough of those, what we want to bring as well to you guys is some solutions. So, I don't want to stand up here and say that our solutions are the only solutions, but we have wrapped our heads around a few things and hopefully make your decision-making that much easier. One of the solutions would be to convert the existing softball field into a minor baseball field. Another scenario would be to repurpose the, the west bench dog park, which is originally used as a baseball field. And the third scenario would be to develop the desert park as a, as a dedicated baseball So, looking at the various scenarios, upgrading the existing west bench field would probably be the least expensive of all the options, because all we would need to do is basically add a pitching mound, change the infield surface from shale and, to turf, and then provide access, provide us access to the existing storage shed up there that is currently being used by the senior mixed slow pitch group. However, doing that would be very unpopular with the current user groups, obviously due to the presence of a pitching mound and the change to their playing surface. So, impacting the, the existing user group would potentially be a significant problem to this scenario. Our second scenario would be to repurpose the west bench dog park. Doing that would accomplish all of our short-term goals and the potential for several long-term goals, as I've outlined. However, as a dog owner and a dog user, and seeing the, the number of people that use that facility, I feel and our group feels that relocating the dog park would be necessary as opposed to abolishing it, we see that as a very valuable community asset, and I've got some thoughts on that, I'll share with you in a minute. There are some limitations, however, for our 15 and under age groups in its current form as the field would be, would be prohibitive and would be actually too small for, for those kids. But there is a tremendous potential with that and the, the slow pitch or the softball field adjacent to it, and the access, obviously, to parking, and the, the, the dedicated use that is already there, there's a tremendous potential for a very comprehensive baseball complex at that facility. Finally, our third scenario would be the desert park redevelopment or development. One thing that this would cause would, would limit the, the user groups that could use that facility in, in making it dedicated for baseball. Would likely be the most expensive option, and would require extensive development. Changing, changing all of that grass on the inside to a bona fide baseball park or parks would, would certainly require the most development in this case. So, comparing the, the various scenarios, looking at one, two, and three, obviously increasing in cost as we go from upgrading the west bench park right all the way up to the desert park development as the most expensive scenario. Each one would accomplish the short-term objectives that I've outlined. Long-term objectives, upgrading the west bench field would only be able to accomplish some of them, not all of them. Repurposing the dog park and the desert park development would accomplish all of our long-term objectives. Now, user groups, of course, the seniors slow pitch and the adult slow pitch would be affected by changing their, their playing surface, and the soccer folks and some of the exhibitions that are occurring out at Desert Park would be affected, so I've made those as, or included those as sort of a negative. The user groups with repurposing the dog, dog park would be unaffected, obviously the dog walkers would be, but again, I have a solution for you. And then the community, gaining an asset in respect to a dedicated baseball park with minimal impact on the, on the existing users. So, what we felt was probably the scenario for us to consider, to look at, and what we're asking you is to consider, is the, the second scenario, and that would be to repurpose the, the west bench dog park as a dedicated minor baseball field. As I said, it's a minimal effect on any of the other sports user groups. The dogs and the dog residents would need to, would need to find another home, accomplish our short-term and long-term goals. Tremendous future potential is a baseball complex, would be maximize the intended use in the town assets that was at one point built as a baseball park, would continue to be a baseball park. Reasonable costs, most of the infrastructure that's necessary is already there. I'll outline that in a minute. And the creation of a new community asset, both in a minor baseball field and potentially a relocated off-leash facility. So, this is what our west bench baseball complex could look like. Light's a little bit tough in here, but we can see there that the, the field on the right, I've outlined in blue, and then the field on the left, I've overlaid what a, what a, what a bantam baseball field, proper dimensioned baseball field would look like, and the blue line around there is basically a mirror of the slow pitch field. So, the yellow line is the existing fence, and it sort of shows you that that, the existing ballpark is smaller than the, than the slow pitch field that is up there. Phase one would be to create the playing surface for a minor baseball, minor baseball field, would be to include field and slash change room facilities that would be suitable for that field, obviously improving some, some of the entry signage and that for, for minor baseball. Phase two would potentially be the field extension, the extension of the outfield fence and to include the, the area formerly known as the BMX track there, with some bleacher areas for, for spectators. Phase three could look, could look like covered dugouts, concession slash washroom area and/or batting cage. So, diagrammatically speaking, phase one, there's our existing fence, we would be comfortable using that as of right now for our Pee-wee ages, but as we progress into the higher age grade, age groups, we would need to expand that, but using the existing fence, the baseball field would need to be created. There's the existing storage shed that is not shown on the, the aerial photo that the slow pitch users do have, so we, we would request a similar sort of facility in the, in the right field area where we could access field equipment and potentially all of the gear that we need to dress the, the baseball field for games. Phase two would look like extending the outfield fence to include the area that I've diagrammed here on the overlay, some bleacher areas on both the, the home and visiting sides of the baseball field for spectators. Phase three would include upgraded dugout, a potential for concession washrooms to facilitate tournament, tournament play, and then subsequently a caged area where kids could practice their batting and pitching skills without the fear of, of injury to spectators or themselves. Okay, let's all find Danny, but what about the dogs? Okay, because I know we're going to get that question. No problem. We'll also come to you with some more solutions. One solution that we've kind of been wrapping our heads around and knowing the community the way that we do, one solution would be Kingsman Park. A second solution could potentially be desert park. There are more solutions, there's lands adjacent to the desert park that could be developed, there's other town assets that could be, I don't want to stand here and be the guy that has to feel like I'm compelled to, to develop the off-leash facility for the town of Asuas. What I'm here to ask you for is a dedicated baseball park, but in doing that, I realize that we're going to face some hardships with some of our existing town infrastructure, so I want to provide one solution that I feel could be looked at, certainly, again, not the only solution, but another, one that could be looked at, and then more importantly, perhaps in the context of what I'm referencing, another solution may actually be fostered. So, why, why we felt that a, that a Kingsman Park solution could, could, could work well is that A, one is centrally located, probably one of the biggest, biggest pluses. I know that the original off-leash dog park committee did bring up this as a potential solution initially, so that is, that is also a positive. There's existing town services on-site, including washrooms, playgrounds, there's shaded areas, there's trees, gazebos are there, it's already totally, totally fenced and enclosed, and all we would really be losing in the process is a very underutilized mini soccer field. So, as I said, at this site, of course, we've got terrific parking, washrooms, playground areas, shaded areas, picnic areas, and all that really we would need to convert this into a very, very top-rate, multi-use, off-leash facility would be to create a new fence somewhere in that location that would provide us with an area for off-leash dogs, mixed large, small dogs, however, somebody could concoct an appropriate layout that could include agility equipment with all of the appropriate infrastructure in place. Some of the huge, some of the huge benefits that I see with this solution could be certainly that is centrally located, it's going to reduce car trips, people will actually be able to walk to the dog park more often instead of having to drive. Every Tuesday, Wednesday night, I'm up at the west bench field, and every single night that I've been up there, I only see people driving up there. Now, I understand that there probably are some people that do walk there, but locating it in more central, in proximity to a lot more residents in town, is going to leave cars at home, it's going to increase sidewalk pedestrian traffic for our businesses, it's going to create much more socializing along that sidewalk for, for dog walkers to and fro and even non-dog walkers. I, what I really like about this is the fact that it's a social, it's a social solution, so it's creating a now a mixed-use space, a space where families, not just mom and dad wanting to walk the dog, or grandma and grandpa wanting to walk the dog, but now maybe they can take their kids to the playground at the same time. What it does, it creates a more of a social, social type of hub rather than just an off-leash destination. Obviously, it's going to be accessible to visitors, it's visible, it's right there. A lot of our visitors are even unaware that there is an off-leash facility here in, in Asuas. The services and amenities are already there, for water, for washrooms, all of the things that would be necessary, power, of course. Our only loss is really an underutilized field, very, very rarely do I ever even see people on that, and I drive by that field probably six times a day. Very cost-effective, there's very little infrastructure that would be potentially necessary, at least to get going, it could be developed into whatever, whatever, whatever vision the committee were to deem necessary. I think more importantly is it's a, it becomes now a family health facility, it becomes an area where everybody can go and meet and, and socialize, an area where you can walk and get an ice cream on the way or the way home, and it creates a very interactive, and I think that the, the site usage there is, could be incredibly powerful for our community. So, I don't want to see that the fact that we're asking for a baseball park to be a negative, as a matter of fact, I see that developing something like this could be a tremendous positive for our community at the same time. I'm all about finding win-win solutions, and here, what we're doing is we're trying to, trying to find a solution that could be exactly what the off-leash people would be looking for while at the same time trying to find a permanent home for our baseball So, to summarize, benefits, town of Asuas, obviously there'd be some huge economic benefits for us being able to host high-caliber tournaments, there's going to be economic benefits, there's going to be social benefits, there's going to be, obviously, benefits for being able to, to use these facilities to their peak potential. Minor baseball, of course, we're going to, we're going to have a proper facility. One of the knocks that we had in our initial year was the facilities, and we had comments from Penticton and West Colona that the higher-level baseball teams, the Pee-wee's and the bantams and certainly the midgets would not come to play in Asuas simply because we're playing off of portable pitching mounds, we're playing off of, in a lot of cases, all-grass fields with short backstops where stealing, which is a, which is a valued part of the game of baseball, is not possible or is, is, is not, is not possible because of the position of the backstops. It's just quite simply that the facilities for minor baseball are not here. And to this point, because we became very frustrated with the fact that our facilities wouldn't attract a lot of these teams to come down, this year, we decided that we would host a lot of these events in Oliver. And that's something that I'm very passionate about our community, and I think our community deserves better. Our community needs a dedicated home for minor baseball. Can Oliver sure be used? Absolutely. But I don't want to call ourselves the Asuas Minor Baseball Facility operating out of Oliver. I'm proud to be the Asuas Minor Baseball Facility, I'm proud to be a member of this community, and I do feel that this turn, that, that these kids, that, that, that these families and that these, these, this growing demographic does need and does deserve a dedicated baseball facility. So, a lot of the other user groups, soccer, slow pitch, based on all of this, would be relatively unaffected. What would the residents gain? Well, they would, they'd gain a, a better dog park, quite frankly, in my opinion, one that's social, the one that's interactive, it's community-focused, certainly centrally located, the dogs are going to get a chance to make even more friends. And our community's kids, this is the big one for me, more active, social, emotional health. The one thing about baseball, and I totally wanted to share you a story, one of the reasons why I love baseball, through all of this process, I got a chance to umpire. A couple of years ago, I took to umpiring, and I've been doing a lot of umpiring up and down the valley, even helping Penticton when they were stuck with, with umpires. And I got a chance to do the final game this year for, for Pee-wee's, although our Pee-wee's weren't playing in it. The coach from Summerland, Terry Rollson, came up to me and he said, he said, he said blue, he said, "Just so you're aware, I have a child on my team who's extreme autistic." And I said, "Okay." He said, "If need be, if we have to pull him from the game, what are the ramifications?" And we walked him through what potentials for pulling a kid mid-game would be. And I said, "Just out of curiosity, what could happen?" He says, "His mood will elevate as intensity elevates, and he could become uncontrollable." And, you know, and he has been known to swing bats, and he hasn't been known to, to get dangerous. And I said, "Okay, well, that's great. I love the, it's a good game going back and forth." We get into about the sixth inning, he comes to me and he says, he says, "Just so you know, things are, are going out." I said, "Okay." And I knew what that meant, we all knew what he meant, and I told the other coach, I said, "Just, just so you know, this is what's happening." The game is close, we get into the seventh inning, and the Penticton team, which is obvi, which is the away team in this game, gets up and they score a couple of runs. Now, the Summerland team is down two, down two. And so, anyway, they get the outs, Penticton's leading, and with two out in the bottom of the seventh, down one run now, bases loaded, this kid comes to the plate. When you know that the kid gets a base hit, scores two runs, his team wins, he's crying, we're crying, that's what baseball does. That's the thought I'd like to leave you with today, is that there's something special about the game of baseball, and that everybody and anybody can be a hero. Thank you for your time today.
Yeah, hang on. Thank you very much, Jason. You've given us a great deal to, to look at here, and thank you for organizing it so well and, and providing many of the options that we would obviously be having to look at, so it would be our town staff that would be, continue to look at this. We do appreciate you coming forward with positive solutions to all of this, and I'm sure that, that council has several questions, as do I, but I'll let, I'll let Counselor Campbell start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. Well, congratulations, Jason. It's the first time we've brought our gallery to tears when it doesn't involve taxes. And guys, you've been incredibly patient, so, so good on you. There's no secrets where I, where I stand as far as kids and sports in our community and creating opportunities, but I'm thankful, I guess, that you did this exercise in the form of a root form of a root cause analysis, because the challenge we face as a council, no matter how passionately we feel about things like this, is that we have to balance our community needs, which is always a challenge. So, I wanted to thank you for taking the approach you, you've taken with this, looking at, with the potential ramifications or challenges to some of the solutions that you've put forth, and yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, and like I say, I, a lot of the things that I was talking about today were not intended to be the only road, was just to sort of show that there are, I think, some win-win, win-win solutions out there.
It helps us.
Thank you.
Counselor Rhodes?
You almost brought me to tears.
You should have been there, CJ.
I love your passion. I love your presentation, it was very thorough, and having, identifying some of the solutions is, is such a great thing. How great to have all these young members of our community out here to see this process and how we get from where we are, and, you know, to, to achieving our goals and that type of thing. With all due respect, I'd like to talk about the dog park a little bit, and I know you have intimate knowledge about how we got to where we are with that. That field out there sat vacant for a number of years. I'm not going to fill in the blanks because I don't know how long it sat there. There were some reasons why it sat empty for all of those years, and along came Jody Hoffman with a long, long list of residents that wished to establish an off-leash dog park in our community. And the council of the day, and myself included, jumped on that very passionately, not quite to the same level as you did today, but certainly there was a lot of passion. And dog owners are a compelling group of people in our community, and our job, you know, includes providing amenities for groups like that in our community, so we moved forward with it. We didn't really repurpose that area up there because it had overgrown, there was no real baseball of any kind, slow pitch, other than the backstop and that kind of thing. So, it was the perfect location at the time. Since that time, we've invested a fair amount of tax dollars in there to put some structures up there to improve the field, and it certainly is a big part of our planning in the, in the future. I can't quite remember how many people were on that list, you know, many, maybe a hundred, two hundred. You would probably know the exact numbers that were on there. And each and every one of them put a lot of thought into, you know, where they wanted to have it and why they wanted to have it up there. So, all of those words are leading up to a question. How is this council of this day going to deal with that passion for that place up there? I know you've provided an alternative, but really, so many of those users up there like that. You know, there's compelling arguments to have it up there. I know you've addressed an awful lot of them, but at the end of the day, if the message goes out that we're repurposing that, you know that there will be tremendous pushback towards this council about that. And so, I would appreciate some of your advice and your thoughts on that.
And I get the, I have the, the fortune of working with Jody on a very regular basis, so we've, we've had some discussions, and, and, and I won't, I won't speak for her. And as a matter of fact, I believe if you look back on that list, we're on that list too, because we had two boxers that we lost a few years ago, and we have two Boston Terriers now, and we are dog park users, the, the off-leash park. I'm, again, our group is not against the dog park, and I want that, and I want that to be known, that, that that's not what we're here for. We're here to try and find an economical, a makesense approach to finding a baseball facility for our kids. Now, what I think we've provided is that, is an area that would minimize tax outlay, that would provide a suitable solution that would allow us to put together an appropriate baseball product, because right now, because we're in infancy, our volunteer base is strong. And I want to keep that momentum moving forward in the right direction, and in order to do that, we need a place that we can call home in terms of both playing there, but a, a facility that will allow us now to take baseball to where it can be in our community. With regards to some of the, the pushback that you'll get, you'll get pushback for change, just for change's sake, right? And you guys will know that is better, better than any of us. But the change that I see that could occur here could be a potentially huge for those residents. The only ones that really could have a, a challenge with this are the ones that do walk there from the golf course properties. Everyone else drives there, and whether they drive there or they drive to town, I mean, that's not going to change, but what's going to change is that people that live in town that do drive there don't have to now. They could walk there. But the facility itself could be that much more than what it is right now. And like I say, we use it, we know that there's a gazebo, we know that you guys have spent some money on the gazebo, we're told that the gazebo could be relocated, with the exception of the concrete pad. We know some, some of our sponsors are in the concrete business and could probably help us with that. But at the end of the day, I think that what the message could be or should be is that we're not kicking you out of your home, we're trying to find you a better one, one that could be, you know, used with the entire family, one that could, could include all of the things that you would love to have up at that site, that you don't, are already available at other sites within the town. And that's just one solution, and I'm sure there's others, right? I, I wish I had that answer, other than I think what we can do is give you a better park.
Thank you. Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great presentation, Dr. Barch, and it's nice to see all the kids here in the audience for sure, and nice for some to come with some solutions, whether they're right or wrong. I have two questions. Is there a Minor Baseball Association in Oliver?
No.
Okay, well, that's great. And number two, if we were to support your thoughts, would you see your association trying to raise some funds to help offset the cost?
Absolutely, and I, and I want to make that point clear, is that we're not actually coming here for money today. We made it on the road.
Everybody's in the end.
But we're not today. And I really truly do feel that, that with our ability to generate funds in the community, with our ability to, to raise sponsorship, I think that this would really be a very, very minimal outlay on behalf of the town, if, if anything at all. You know, being able to provide some shovels and some things like that, but I think other than that, I don't see a lot happening, certainly in the foreseeable future. And to answer your question about Oliver, they have a recreational program that is sort of an after-school program, and it's just pickup baseball, so it's not an organized, you know, game scenario. We do play with, play now, but the kids will be the first ones to tell you that it's, there's a difference between recreational and, and competitive baseball.
Thank you.
So, Jason, you, oh, sorry, Carol, I'll get you, just a sec. You said that you have played this year out of Oliver. If Oliver doesn't have this set up the same way you do, how is it that they have all these fields that work better than here? Do they?
Great question. They've got five baseball fields.
And, and they are used, or just on a sort of an ad hoc after-school basis?
With minor baseball.
Yeah.
Their slow pitch, their slow pitch user group is probably the same, maybe a little bit more in terms of user group, in terms of user base. What, what they do is they host a couple of really big tournaments every year, and that fills up their fields. I know for certain the Mother's Day and Father's Day weekends, they fill those fields. But truthfully, their fields, I, I also feel that their, that their five baseball fields could be better, could be better suited to, towards that. Part of, part of our master plan moving forward is if we grow to double what I, what we are now, because we really haven't even approached Oliver. If we grow to that, I see our association working very similar to minor hockey, in that kids will practice here, kids will practice there, and then they switch.
So, April, May, and June are the months that you play baseball. You don't do it in the summer, it's too hot, is that the reason?
No, not right now. Summer baseball is, is that step above spring baseball. Spring baseball is sort of the entry-level competitive baseball. Summer baseball is more competitive, sort of like a rep, if you will, like equivalent of rep hockey.
So, I've been here long enough that I've seen baseball come and go, and, and soccer, and, you know, my kids used to play it as well. I guess one of the concerns that I have, since you're involved with, with minor hockey, it seemed to be the same group of parents and kids that get their kids involved in everything. And as a teacher, I always wanted to try and encourage, you know, more participation. Does the cost for this, or the travel time, or does that stop some kids, or are you just, it doesn't matter what sport you have, I bet you have the same group of kids and parents in all activities, just because they're keeners, and I'm all for getting kids outside, and I'd like to encourage more.
And the, like I was saying before, the interesting thing about baseball is that we see kids that we don't see at hockey, that we don't see at soccer. And baseball is kind of unique that way, because baseball is a hurry-up-and-wait kind of game. You know, fast explosive movements and then strategy, explosive movements and strategy. And that appeals to a wider range of, of child than, say, a hockey-type of environment or even a soccer-type of environment.
And the cost is obviously less than ba, than hockey, I would think.
For sure. Yeah, I mean, as you go up, of course, it's the travel, with anything else. Mom and dad going to Colona and beyond, you know, that's when costs start to get out of control. But at this point, we have so much baseball in our valley, you know, between here, between us and Summerland South, we've got seven, I'll say, seven different teams that we could play at each age group.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of hockey.
The other thing was that you mentioned that there were different mounds. I think they're placed differently for different age groups.
Yes.
Is that, are you able to accommodate both of those different, on the same field, if you needed to?
Definitely.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Sorry, Counselor Youngberg, did you have a question?
Yes, I do, thanks. Great presentation, Jason.
Thank you, Counselor.
And of course, I've been involved when my son played ball here years ago, and I really, really love the idea of seeing this park developed. I have the, just to answer the mayor's question, the mounds in Oliver were built for a baseball academy that ran in Oliver for a number of years, and I believe probably Susan knows. Anyways, they, they were there. Could we ever obtain something like that here? If we were able to provide a facility that would be acceptable, number one, because I think that was a huge input for Oliver at the time when it was being run. We had teams training, and some of the superstars training some of the individuals, so I thought that would be a, a possibility to put in your thinking bank, I'm sure it's there already. But the teams, one of the, always the concerns I have is the longevity of something that we're going to develop. And so, your enrollment in the sport today would be, how many children at the age of, say, five, six, seven, eight, how many would be involved?
Five.
Like, what's your membership, you know, like?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity.
Probably, probably forty, fifty-five?
Fifty-five?
Okay.
Because the majority of them would be still here ten years from today, so our funds that would be involved in developing a park would look at maybe a ten-year program.
Yeah.
You know, when you're doing your budgeting and doing your forward-thinking.
For sure.
Yeah, so I guess something like that would be obtainable.
Yeah, and, and our kids are just a T-ball now, so I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah.
The other, the other part is too, is that our, right now, last year, we had a bantam group. I'll give a quick backstory, I'm taking way more than my fifteen minutes here. Last year, we, we had a bantam group, this year, we, we didn't. And the reason that we did that was we had a lot of pushback from the other associations because of the facility that we're playing on. We provided exit surveys to all of our members, and that was the number one, the number one thing that, that was, in their minds, was substandard, was that. And the feedback that we got from the coaches and the presidents of the other associations is that at the bantam level, we cannot play on temporary pitching mounds. So, so that was a big thing for us. So, that sort of, we had to sort of scale that back a little bit this year, building our grassroots program, building our younger program, and our numbers are increasing at that level. So, from the eight-under that you speak of, that group is, is bigger this year than it was last year.
Oh, good, good to hear. We certainly need something for the young folks anyways in the summer, so I'm sure there's all sorts of opportunities to utilize the facility in July and August if, if, if we had one.
For sure.
Yeah.
And that program in Oliver is still being run, and it's still one of their, one of the flagship uses of that facility.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, the baseball academy's still in.
Big League Experience, it's called.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. That's great to hear, I have not heard of it recently, but yeah, that's good. Well, we could maybe move in there somehow.
Thank you. Counselor Rhodes?
One more quick question. I want you to know that I'm a big baseball fan for talking. Have you talked, talked with or liaised with the Desert Park Association, the Exhibition Association, about the infield there? And I ask that because you're part of, you know, accessing that property is going through the racetrack area and that kind of thing, but have you talked to them at all? Is there any information you could provide with that? Because there was one of your options on there, I know it was one of the more expensive ones, but...
Yeah, and all of our dialogue for that facility has been through the community services. And our understanding is, is that when baseball starts, I think there is a very short overlap, but when baseball starts, the use of the track is supposed to have been ceased, because there have been times where we've been out in the baseball field, these guys with horses running around, and that gets us concerned. We've had to sort of talk to the director of community services on those sorts of things, and he assured us that, that those practices and those times on the track were not sanctioned. So, there is a safety concern, for sure, if there's overlap like that.
So, thank you very much, Jason, for your presentation and answering all our questions. Obviously, this is a huge issue that we're going to look like, look at, talk with Gerald Davis and, and Jim Zachal and our CAO when he comes back. It's going to take a little bit of time for us to have a look and obviously get some kind of a report after we look at all of the issues and the possibilities, and, you know, budgeting, and, but we do have a meeting, I believe, in August where we sort of do pre-budgeting and look at what are the issues that we need to deal with. So, thank you for being so explicit in all of the options and the, and the concerns pro and con that you've given us, and we will certainly get staff to look at all of this and come back with a report. And fortunately, we have a little bit of time. You don't need this tomorrow.
No, we're, we're good. We're happy to help moving things forward and be available to answer any questions.
And, and I see that Mr. Burton is here from the adult baseball, and so I...
No, just these baseball.
Just these guys, okay, so I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about making sure that we have the Adult Baseball League be part of this conversation as well, because obviously, there are different needs, and they did come to us before with asking for more facilities. So, we do have to come up with compromises, that's what we do best, but we will certainly look at it.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all the time and, and providing all this information to us.
Great, thank you very much for your time, Ray.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Yay!
Okay, next on our, on our list of delegations is Grisella Dos Santos, who would like to, would you like to come up to the microphone, please? you like to come up to the microphone, please, and tell us a little bit about your presentation?
So, before I start, did you get a letter from Gerald?
Sorry, did we get a letter from?
A letter from Gerald?
Oh, not in this part. This is the committee of the whole, and what you're doing is just presenting what you would like to see. This is not a decision-making meeting, and therefore, we will deal with something later on in our regular meeting. But you had asked to come to and speak to us about your ideas. Thank you.
So, my name is Grisela Dos Santos. I'm here today to inquire about renting or leasing a room in the Sonora Center. I have been a resident of the Suez for 22 years. My husband and I are both graduates of OSS, as well as our four boys. I have been a childcare provider for the past 25 years, and working with children continues to be my passion. I have operated Mrs. D's Play School in Cleveland for the past 19 years, and recently opened up an after-school program in Cleveland as well for the past two years. And in April of this year, 2017, I opened up Mrs. D's Play School in the Suez. And I just, as my letter stated, I was operating Mrs. D's Play School in the Suez Elementary School. However, due to the new implementations that the ministry has enforced about class sizes, we have to relocate a day-to-play school. The Sonora Center would be a great location and close to the school so that we could continue to interact with the elementary school, making transitioning to kindergarten for the four-year-olds easier and a more, better experience for them. They could be involved in the concerts. We do ready, set, learn, and certainly, the interaction and socialization play a very big role in becoming independent and socially evolved. Our programs involve interacting with people in our community, so it would be close as well. We like to make sure that the kids are introduced into our community, like visiting the fire hall, the RSP, the library, the post office, et cetera. I have 16 children presently enrolled, because we took enrollment earlier and then to find out the school that we needed to relocate. So, I have 16 presently enrolled for September and hope to be able to accommodate eight more. So, we would have a morning class and then an afternoon class. I am a licensed facility and abide by interior health guidelines. The community was a failed play school, preschool for seven months until I opened up Mrs. D's. The impact was felt by the families as they drove their children to Oliver so that they could attend the preschool programs there. So, really important is keeping families and children in our community, and if we cannot provide these specific services, our families will go to other communities to access this. So, I hope that we can work together as a community to keep Mrs. D's Play School running for the families and children in the Suez.
Good. Well, thank you very much. We hope so, too. Back in the dark ages, I was a play school teacher, and we had the play school or preschool in the United Church way back. I think we used a couple of other spots around town as well. So, I think that your suggestion about using this Sonora Center is very likely a good one, and what we will do is get a report from our director, Davis, on whether that will be workable or not, and how we could facilitate that. One of the questions I had was, is there a certain space, square footage, that you need, and does that depend on the number of kids that you have in there? And also, do you, if you have a certain number of kids, do you require two adults in the room, or how does that work?
So, to licensing standards, I only take eight children on at a time.
Okay.
And so, every child needs 3.7 square meters.
Okay.
It's not very big. So, I did go and look up at a couple of the rooms up there, and one of the suggested rooms was the craft room, which we could, I wouldn't go past 2:30, and I know that they have crafty kids to do.
Yes.
And so, we could share the room. And so, I only would have eight children per room, and it would just, Monday, Wednesday, Friday would be one class that would accommodate eight. And then Tuesday, Thursday mornings would be another eight.
Oh, I see.
And I'm hoping, because I've already filled up before I could even advertise, I'm just thinking, new people to the community wouldn't have that opportunity, even though that there was space there. So, I'm going to try, I'm going to advertise for another, and that would be my Tuesday and Thursday afternoon class from like 11:45 till 2:15.
So, it's just you, or do you require another adult?
I run my program in Cleveland, and so I have Cheryl Holt, who is also a Mrs. D's resident. She runs the program for me, and so we only need one person per eight children.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would never exceed eight children.
Good. Okay, thank you. Yes?
Director Davis has a report on the regular...
Yes, we know, yeah, that's correct. Anybody else have any other questions? Oh, and I guess the other thing I was thinking about was the Child Care Center. Do they offer a similar type of program, and just they may be full, or it's just two options, or?
Just, I was employed there.
Okay.
I'm pointing to the administrative work. And I do know by licensing, now, don't quote, but I do know by our licensing, you cannot have a play school program and a daycare combined.
Oh.
They have something that's called play-share, so it's not a preschool. But by licensing standards, you're not allowed to operate the two combined. You have to have either a play school program or a daycare. You can't combine them.
That's interesting. I didn't know that.
Yeah, because daycare is classified as running all day. Where preschool, we only run two and a half hours per day, or play school.
Well, thank you. We will, anybody else have any?
We will have a report from Director Davis this afternoon. So, thank you very much for coming and outlining your program for us. We appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else? Then I would suggest that we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Councilor Campbell, Councilor King, all in favor. Thank you very much.